Don't forget to attend the SUSE party. After eight, free beer. And now... And now the town hall meeting.
Hello, so thanks for joining. This is not the end of the slot, you know. The party's not right now. So no need to applause yet. I'm sorry. So this is the town hall meeting. This is one slot that we reserved for a discussion. Well, first a board report and then discussion between everybody in the room and the few people here on stage who are on the board. So first a quick round of introduction. I'm Vincent Unz, I'm the chairman of the board. So chairman means that I'm actually not elected. I've been appointed by SUSE. Yeah, Robert?
I'm Robert Schrecker. I work for SUSE. And I've been elected to the board... Ah, GNOME, huh? I've been elected to the board in the last cycle, in November. And we've been trying to, you know, improve the things that we do. And we'll talk about that in the board report. And...
Andy Waffer, I work for ARM. Thanks to your gracious votes, I was elected to the board. And as Robert was saying, we're just trying to improve things for you guys.
And I'm Richard, I work for College in the UK. And I was elected... well, I didn't actually get in with the election, but I was... You didn't... not enough of you voted, but yes, I was appointed.
And we're missing one board member, Will Stevenson, who didn't make it to the event, so he cannot be here on stage. So, Robert, next slide. Oh, your magic. So this is the agenda. We have like first thing first, a few things to tell because it's important. Board report, so we will have just a few minutes to explain what we've been doing in the last few months, to explain what our priorities are, and to give a quick status update on all that. Some announcements, and then hopefully a lot of time for discussion. I hope you have a lot of questions for the discussion because we're here for that. Next slide. So, first thing first. A few things about tomorrow. First, Stella, are you here? Stella, you want to talk about the lunch tomorrow? Quickly? Run, run, run!
Thank you. So tomorrow we're gonna order some more traditional Greek food to have for lunch and have it here on time. So we want to ask who of you would prefer some cooked food instead of gyros and pizzas? Stathis, can you count?
One, two...
Keep your hands up, please, high, high up. You're very hungry.
What is counting? We can talk about this second item on this slide. Theo, are you here? Yes. Keep your hands up if you want to...
I missed it, I missed it.
So yeah, a small announcement about tomorrow. We are going to have a presentation about how to prepare for a signing party, how to actually participate in a signing party, and how to do your homework afterwards. The presentation will be at 5:30 in this room by Miko Kraszewski here. And after that, we are going to actually have the signing party. For those that have not prepared yet your key slips, you can find a webpage that you can create key slips in our conference page. And you can print them out of the registration desk. The guys are already organized for that. Thank you.
Thanks. So it's tomorrow afternoon, I think. And bring your ID, yeah, if people need to verify. Two IDs? Okay, two IDs for Michel and one ID for everybody else. Okay. Okay, if... That's why two, in that case, okay. Yes, so next slide. We'd like to thank, obviously, the organizers. All the people with blue T-shirts. So it's actually the first time we do an OpenSUSE conference not in a city where SUSE has an office. And it's really going very smoothly, I think. Everybody can agree with that. So Kostas was telling me a few hours ago, this is not finished yet, so everything can still go wrong. But no, I think everything will go fine. So really, they're doing a great job. And we're really happy about that, and the Greek team is fantastic. We also need to thank the sponsors of the conference. So that includes SUSE, ARM, Dev HDR, and Oracle. Obviously, without them, the conference wouldn't be possible because they bring money. And... Oh, yes. And so yeah, without all the money, we wouldn't be able to organize the event and also to sponsor a lot of people to come to the event. So that's really important. And with that, I think we're moving to the board report. And you're starting.
So better visibility and communication. So during the last election cycle, we heard a lot of people saying, "Well, the board was hidden, blah, 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 whatever." So we made it a point this time to... Since the beginning of the year, to have regular board meetings and then post the meeting minutes. The meeting minutes are on the wiki. We send out an email message to the project list when the meeting minutes get posted, so hopefully everybody's up to date on that. We also have an activities wiki page. So if you go to the wiki and then search for "board", you will find the wiki with the meeting minutes and you will also find the wiki page with the activities page. The activities page are basically the big highlights that we're working on. These are the things that you also see here. There's not a detailed task list. It's just the highlights of things such as, you know, finding somebody for organizing next year's OpenSUSE conference. And there will be an announcement here later. Things like that. You know, Foundation Financial Transparency, which Winston will talk about in a minute. So all of the things that you see here are also on the activities page. And so I think we've made an improvement. We're definitely making an effort. If this is still not sufficient for you guys in the community, if you still think we need to do more communication, you know, visibility, please let us know. Send a message to the board mailing list or, you know, talk to us while we're here. That's why we're here, so we can have face-to-face conversations. You know, we are not everywhere all the time, and so this is a great time for everybody to interact with us face-to-face. And you're always welcome to send something to the board mailing list and we will get back to you. And Richard will talk about the ambassador program.
Well, yes. For the last couple of years, Kostas has been taking the lead, designing a revamp of the ambassador program. It was called Ambassador 2.0. And then around about the time I was joining the board, it was sort of renamed the Local Coordinators. And so as Kostas sort of brought it to the board at the same time I've joined, we as a board have been looking at it, refining it. And now I'm currently launching it. Hopefully, in the future, we may have Kostas again. So the Local Coordinators program is going live. We have 12 new coordinators. They're getting involved, hopefully organizing our ambassadors, getting a bigger presence around the... or a more organized presence around the world with our various communities.
And next, we have Foundation. Yep. So Foundation and Financial Transparency. That's a topic which we've had for the last... every year, I guess. Three or four years, yes. So... A few years ago, there was a lot of willingness for... from a lot of people inside the community to push for establishing Foundation. And this is a path that was investigated for quite some time. And there were two reasons for that. One was that people really wanted to get more independent from the main sponsor, which was Novell at that time. And the other reason was really about making it possible to gather money in the name of the project instead of having to rely on a sponsor for that. In the past few years, in the past more or less one year and a half, one year, we've seen that there's been quite a change in the attitude from a lot of people. And at least the reason, which was the distrust of Novell, kind of disappeared for most people. And the main reason which was left was really about money. And since the beginning of the year, actually, inside SUSE, there was a plan to start establishing inside the company a budget dedicated to SUSE. And so SUSE talked to the board when we had face-to-face meeting in Nuremberg in April. And they presented us the plan that they want to open up this budget time after time, so that it's slowly getting controlled, at least part of it, controlled by the board. So the board would decide how it's getting used, what would be the main priorities and so on for using this money. And so we think it's really a good idea because first, it means that we can... if it goes down, then the laptop will die. So yeah, we think it's a good idea because first, this means we will have some money to do the things we want. But also, we don't... we won't have the overhead of having to take care of the money, all the accounting and so on. And so obviously, that's true of, because there are a few things that we will have difficulties doing, like individual donations. But at least as a first step, we think it's a really good first step. So the plan is really for the first year to have a budget which is prepared inside SUSE and presented to the board so that the board can see how it works. And in the second year, for instance, start allocating part of the budget to the board so that the board can decide how this is getting used. And with the years, the board could have more and more control over the budget. So we're willing to try that. We think it's really a good approach. And we think it's also good because it means that the board won't have to do a lot of work to work with the money. And we've seen in the past few months that we actually are quite busy with other activities inside the board, so it's a good solution. So right now, we're playing with that. And from a SUSE perspective, I think it truly shows what Hal was saying this morning, where the company is willing to let go more and more power to the community, including control of some part of the money. So that's really nice, I think.
Yeah, one addition to that is that we're working on a report, actually, about the situation concerning the Foundation. That's been in progress for quite a while and will unfortunately take a little while longer. But this is not a decision or anything where the community was excluded. So you will see a report from the board about the Foundation. You will hear our individual thoughts. And then it will go out for discussion. Because in the end, the discussion about the Foundation has been coming around year after year after year with no real conclusion. And we would really like to see the topic basically put to rest, whichever way it may be. And so therefore, we're working on a report where you will get... First of all, you will get a report from the board as a whole. And then each of us will comment on the report and also give their individual thoughts. And then it can be discussed in the community, and then we'll see where that goes. Obviously, this whole thing is a process and it might take us another month or two to get the report out. But you know, this was not a decision that was made in a closed room. You guys will be included and there will be a report so that everybody has all the information and then we can have a good discussion about it in the community. So you know, there's no attempt to cut off any discussion or decision by the community.
And this can be discussed after the report. Like, we have like 30 minutes right now... well, not now, but in a few minutes to discuss this. Next item is for Andy.
Yeah, the trademark usage, so the OpenSUSE logo, the OpenSUSE term, et cetera. The board now has more decisive power on the OpenSUSE trademarks. We liaise with the SUSE legal team to ensure that requests comply to the letter of legalese. Part of the... One of the requests for trademark usage was from Epson. They are going to be using OpenSUSE and YAST in an upcoming product that's going to be released soon. We had numerous discussions with Epson. They were very gracious to actually come to us in advance and follow the process correctly. If anyone has a request to use our trademark, it's permission@suse.com. The board will get copied automatically, as will legal team. And we will discuss the request and then move forward. Also, if anyone thinks that somebody's breaking the trademark, you can again send an email to the permission alias, explaining the details.
Just one thing. In the past few months, we got feedback that mails to the permission alias got lost. Now I'm receiving these mails, so they won't get lost anymore.
Another request for trademark usage, which you'll see online, is from Muckwear. They're an online tech publication. They are going to be using our trademark for a dedicated OpenSUSE online magazine. So, which is great to see our name getting out there. A nice focus product for OpenSUSE. Next item is departures and additions to the board. As you may be aware, at the last round of elections, Pascal was a member of the board. Unfortunately, due to some personal circumstances, he had to step down. And he's actually... You may have noticed he's had to actually step away from the project for a short period of time. He took the decision in February to step down due to his circumstances, which is why Richard, who was the next in line with number of votes, was then elected to the board or assigned to the board under our discussion. Unfortunately, recently, Raymond Wunick has also had to step down due to personal circumstances. Normally, the board is made up of five elected members plus a chairman who's appointed. So we're currently running with only the four elected members. Two from... two elected SUSE employees. There's myself from ARM and Richard. Come the next election at the end of this year, there will be four seats up for election. There's myself, Will Stevenson, Richard, who replaced Pascal, and also a vacancy left by Raymond. So please, come election time, make sure you do use your vote. We're here to help the project. If you have issues, if you have grievances, if you think that, you know, the project can be better served by somebody in specific, please speak to them, use your vote. Otherwise, any complaints would just be pointless in that respect. You just need to use your vote so we can help you move forward.
And you can stand up for the elections, obviously.
All right, and this brings us to announcements. We have two of those. First, the OpenSUSE Summit, so that's our next event, face-to-face event. It will take place in Orlando, Florida, at the Disney Coronado Springs Resort. So if you have any chance to come to Florida, it'll be in November. It'll be nice and warm, so you know... I mean, it'll be warm in Greece in November too, but the rest of Europe will probably be frozen over. So you know, this is a good place to get out of the cold. So the OpenSUSE Summit, we had a great event last year. We're hoping to have a great event this year. Registration is open. And you can also submit your papers. We're using the same systems that we did for the conference. So if you already have... you obviously, you're here, you're registered, so you already have an account in the system. All you have to do is login and register for the OpenSUSE Summit. And if you have a session to contribute, you are welcome. Please submit your sessions. And now, are we ready? Drum roll, please. And here we go. OC14 will be in Dubrovnik, Croatia next year. And we have Swebor here, please stand up, who is going to be the lead of the organizing committee. And come on up on stage. And Kostas, come on up. And so we are going to pass the GICO of the organization committee from this year's team to next year's team. All right. So there's a session tomorrow. First of all, there are two sessions tomorrow. One by Kostas, talking about the organization of OC13. And that session is followed by Swebor's session introducing Dubrovnik as next year's location. And he will introduce the team that will help him to organize the conference. And so there'll be a nice transition. And so, you know, please go and support these guys. Again, thank you to the organizing team for this year and thank you for all the work you will be doing between now and next year. And next year, we're looking at probably an April conference. So get ready for Dubrovnik. All right, thank you, guys. All right, and with that, we've come to the end of the quote-unquote "formal" presentation. And now it is up to you to start discussion, ask questions. There's a microphone somewhere floating around. And so please raise your hand and it will eventually arrive at your location. And we will try best to answer.
This morning, Ralph talked about the gap between OpenSUSE and SLI. And what is your take? How to fill the gap and maybe how would Evergreen fit in there?
So how the gap would be closed, this is mostly a technical issue as far as, you know, we're concerned at this point. And generally, as the board, we try to keep our fingers out of the technical issues because it does not go well. Right? And... But we've had discussions with representatives from SUSE about, you know, how they might go about this and introducing potential ideas. But in the end, it is really a decision that is up to the technical leadership within each team of the project. So the GNOME team, the KDE team, you know, the artwork guys, you know, the guys that work in Base System, definitely release management, you know, so Kulo and the other release managers. That's where the discussion really has to take place, on a technical level. That's where we have to start. And then if it becomes a governance issue or something like that, that's where certainly where we at the board would get more involved. But in general, we try to stay out of the technical discussions. Now, mind you, all of us also contribute to Factory in some technical way. And so we do have opinions. And maybe Andrew will share his first.
Not so much my opinion, but a message for, you know, those that aren't SUSE employees. With the increase of SUSE engineers that will be contributing to Factory and the distribution in the short term and hopefully continued long term, don't feel threatened just because you see all these people with SUSE email addresses. You know, they are community members just like you are. So... And also, don't expect them to do all the work. The worst thing you can do is go, "Well, I won't bother because I'm sure one of these, you know, additional SUSE guys is going to do it." In the words of Henne, "Just do it." If you want it done, do it. Waiting around, hoping that one of these, you know, super experienced engineers is going to do it, that's not going to wash. And in some respects, you guys might actually know a bit more than they will with regards to how to get it into OpenSUSE. Okay? So they've been too busy on their enterprise product. Things are slightly different with an OpenSUSE. They will need to do some learning. You may be able to coach them. If you've got questions, ask them. You know, don't be afraid from that perspective. I just want to make sure that, you know, you guys in the community are fully aware that these guys aren't coming in to take over what you're doing. They're coming in to add to what you're doing. And that's key. Otherwise, we will not be able to close this gap.
So now I'm wearing my Factory contributor hat. So from my point of view, I think we're trying to solve similar or the same problems in having people that want... don't ever change anything, right? And we have people that say, "Change everything every day," right? And in the enterprise, in some way, the same people exist. And so from that point of view, I, you know, have been thinking of, what if we were to go and say, "We have a very small core that's just the kernel in C++ and C maybe, and maybe something else, but as small as possible." And that may evolve with the kernel. So that core gets released, you know, with the kernel cadence, and that's it. And then everything else above may have some kind of different release cycle. And when they all happen to meet, then we make a big release, then we have a DVD. And in between, it's a semi-rolling release. That is one possibility, you know? And... But again, within the technical team, we have to discuss those things, right? And again, it will require everybody that contributes to Factory to think about this and to talk about it. And as Andrew said, you know, the SUSE engineers will be there as part of the discussion and they're here to help and they're here to add ideas, right? But in the end, that discussion needs to be driven by us. And we do know that the release cycle that we have currently takes a lot of manpower, especially towards the end. And maybe with the changing ecosystem around us, more stuff going into the cloud, maybe the DVD production that we have today may not be what we want, COM version 14 or, you know, whenever, whenever that may be. So it is a discussion that I think we might want to have in the community at, you know, some point, maybe soon, maybe later. But there's definitely stuff where, you know, we can talk about that that will in the end help both of us. Because if we can figure out a way how to keep the SUSE engineers engaged for longer, right? If you look at what happened in the past, is we get all this manpower that helps us in the project from all the SUSE engineers, then they go and they branch SUSE Linux Enterprise, and then they all disappear, which is, you know, not nice for us as a technical community. And in the end, it is also not nice for the SUSE engineers because they end up working on old code. And they're also developers, and they don't want to work on old crap, just like we don't, right? And so if we can close that gap, we can actually hold these guys in the project for much longer. It makes their job easier, it makes our job more enjoyable because we have more fingers on the keyboard, and everything will become easier. And so if we can have that technical discussion and find a way together, I think we can all benefit.
One thing that we could also try and leverage to bridge that gap is looking at the processes that both products use. So, you know, the Jenkins CI loops, you know, the open QA stuff that we use. What works and what doesn't work? Would it work, you know, in a SLI product? Can we try and integrate the processes so that it's a seamless testing process for both products? Without having to, "Okay, we've tested it in OpenSUSE, yeah, but it doesn't work for SLI, so we need to retest," et cetera. We're just basing cycles. And, you know, guys have experience using Jenkins. Can we use that as well? Can it fit into the same loop, et cetera? And also, packages or package sets that go into OpenSUSE that would effectively feed into SLI products, take SUSE云from an OpenStack. We've got OpenStack package for OpenSUSE. Is there any way that we can maximize our testing on OpenStack to ensure that it helps?
to ensure that it helps Sli with Suza Cloud? And I'm sure there are countless other processes that happen for the other product sets. Utilizing the infrastructure that we've got ready to the maximum are the ways that we can use Kiwi better, or other tools that we have at our disposal. I don't think it's, it's not going to be a quick fix to bridge the gap. We need to look in detail at both sides, how we do things. And there will most likely be, need to be changes on both sides to enable that gap to close. There'll probably be some pain, there'll be some crying, some screams, toys falling out of the pram, but that's just something that we have to deal with. We know it's going to happen, and we just have to be grown up about it and deal with it when it does. But as Robert was saying, it's the, you know, the team leads are the ones that would have the best insight as to how to help close that gap. Obviously with input from the teams, and, but it's something that everyone can participate in. It doesn't just have to be the team leads. Everyone can participate in the discussion. But those with the experience, the knowledge should at least be listened to with some seriousness. Ron, just dismissing them because you don't agree with what they're saying.
So, I don't see every individual team to make up their minds on how to bridge this gap, because there's no overall master plan with some greater idea how to do it. Or, a bit of it, maybe.
At this point, no. The plan has to evolve from the discussion that we have within the community, and, you know, with, from the contributors. You know, the four or five of us that are on the board, we're certainly not going to sit here and make a master plan and say, "Here, go do this," right? This is not how it works, right? And we all know how that works. If we go and say, "Go do that", you guys are all going to yell at us, and rightfully so, rightfully so, right? You should, because that's not our job, right? The technical community, all those that contribute to Factory, all those that maintain packages, all the project maintainers, everybody has to be part of this discussion. And everybody has to, you know, you guys have to think about, "How can we do that? Do we want to do that?" Right? I mean, in the end, if everybody in the technical community says, "No, we don't want to do that", there's nobody that can enforce you. We are all volunteers, we spend our time, right? But it makes sense, because in the end, we as a distribution will grow. We will grow, and over the long term, we will have more contributors, because we will be able to hold the Suza engineers in the Open Suza community as contributors, because the code bases will not be basically 30 years apart, right? If you look at Sli 11, it is really old. It is really old. And look where Open Suza, you know, 12.3 is and where 13.1 is going to be, right? And if we can find a way to close that gap that Ralph did this morning, we are going to hold those engineers, and we're going to have their interest, and they're going to want to contribute, and it's going, everybody's going to win.
Yeah, I just want to say that trying to find the master plan might be too difficult to, I don't know, trying to make the impossible possible. I think if you look at different projects, they have very different mindset. Some of them put new features very high on their ranking, and breakage, okay, take the new stuff. Others say, "Hey, you're breaking this." And so within projects, you see people bashing others that they broke something in an incompatible way. And then in other projects, you see people bashing them why they aren't on a new version. So as the projects have a different opinion on what they want and how they want, you know, set their different priorities to solutions for bridging the gap might be different. So I think it's good to collect the discussion input from all the different projects, and then try to find common things. That's why I said, you know, tumbleweed or other approaches. And there are many cleverer people than me to figure that out. I'm sure wherever there is synergies, we will use them. So if somebody has figured it out for one project, then we'll publish it, and others can use it the same way.
A very simple question, but a bit confused me is, next year, we will have Open Suza Conference besides Summit. All the Open Suza Conference will be renamed as the Summit for special reason.
No, the two events are different. Open Suza Conference is more than likely the main Open Suza face-to-face event. And we hope that moving forward, it will continue to be community-driven. The Greeks have shown us the light, we just now need to follow that path. The summit is a, the first one was last year, and it was started as an effort to get more presence in the Americas. Because in all honesty, our exposure in the Americas is pretty weak, especially North America. So it's an effort to get more of a face-to-face community going there. But that doesn't mean that Summit, you know, we couldn't have opensuzisummit asia, for instance, or opensuzisummit africa, or whatever. Summit, I think, and it's still up, you know, there's nothing said in concrete. I'm just speaking as myself, not as the collective board. Summit, I think, is for smaller events. So if we want to try and kickstart something in Taiwan, or China, or whatever, there's no reason why we can't say, "Right, we're going to have Summit", you know, we could have two summits in a year, one in North America, one in Far East. But the feeling, I think, most of us are agreed on is that the conference is here to stay. OSC will be here to stay, and the intention is that it is community-driven. And if you'd like to see an event happen in your area, then by all means, email a proposal through saying, you know, "We would love to have a two-day event", you know, for instance, you've got Costco that happens in Taiwan. "We'd like to have a two-day event following straight on from Costco." So build something up from there. But, yeah, they will be two separate events. And I think that's how we see it moving forward. Does that answer it?
Yeah, thank you. I'm from Canada, Milan.
And just, you know, one quick addition. So looking one year further ahead to OSC 15, sometime this year, we will send out a call for location, just like we did last year. But this year, it will be a little earlier. And we're hoping to have people that are interested send us emails and proposals before this year is over. And then there would be an announcement for OSC 15 next year at the conference, similar to what we have done here. So, yeah, the conference is intended to stay in Europe. And then other events outside Europe would be Open Suza Summit. And as Andy said, you know, if you want to organize one, we will be here to help and support you.
Okay, other questions?
No, no.
So, I've been doing the previous conference, I've been also involved with this one. And one thing that was pretty much sad was that we had complaints that the board was absent from the preparations of the conference. I would like to hear if you share this point, if you agree that this is a problem, and if you, how you plan to fix it for next year.
So, I think it's by design. The board, the way, I think, I'm going to say "we", but I believe everybody agrees on the board. I think that we don't believe the board should have, should get its hands dirty in every area of the project. That includes development, but that could include like artwork team or whatever, or the organization team of the conference. And the truth is that we have already a lot of topics to deal with, and it's really difficult for us to do a good job at that. And it's hard for us to get more involved in many other areas. What the board could have done better this year is clearly follow the organization of the conference a bit better, and help the organization team communicate inside the project. I think that's two things where the board could have done a better job. Yeah, that's my perspective.
When you say the board being more involved in the organization, do you mean in the back office organization? Or do you mean actually at the event with the setup? So in this case, from Monday, you know, to help making sure that all the microphones are all working, etcetera, which part?
Yeah, so I think that every contribution would be appreciated. But what I think that the board should do is very important from my point of view is to motivate people, to have some standard people, like every year, to do some remote work that should be done. And also to try to find new people and to fill in the slots that are needed for, I don't know, various jobs for the conference.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of where Vincent was coming in with the, we need to, we could have helped the communications side of things a bit better. There are already some key people that have been helping out, both locally and remotely. And they've done these sort of things for the last few conferences, actually. You know, for instance, Jürgen with a lot of the video with Thomas's help locally here. And we've got Christopher back in Nuremberg, helping with a lot of the video stuff as well. Henne was there in the background, helping, advising Kostas, and helping to do some other, the internal run-arounds with sponsors, you know, with primary sponsor. So there are people, but please, you know, send us your feedback in detail and explain why you felt X was a failure, and why Y was maybe a success. We are open to feedback, both positive and negative, because the only way we can move forward is by learning from our mistakes.
I think what he was trying to say is that this is the main event of our community, right? So it needs some more input from you guys as you're supposed to set the ground rules and everything, and look that the guiding principles are set through and stuff like that. So I think the idea behind these questions, and I heard them not only from Theo, but also from other guys, is that this is our event, this is not some random conference you go to. And so it needs input from you as our leaders.
Don't you think there would have been a risk, though? I mean, we had a great organizing team putting this together. We wouldn't want to be seen to be stepping on their toes and getting involved when they're doing their job organizing it. How would you sort of draw that line, I guess?
They are also fine if you tell them, just tell them every other week, that what they do is great, which you also didn't do. So it's not necessarily about, you know, criticism, but it's also about that they have the feeling that you're involved in that.
Some small addition to that is that I sent some feedback already. I've been in pretty much all of the project meetings for the past two years, and I was giving status updates for the conference the previous year every time. But I still felt like I kind of ignored when I asked for people to do some remote work very actively. And that is, you know, I'm not saying that you're doing a bad job or whatever, but I felt in the conference part, there should be more involvement for the board, because I think it's very important for the community to have a good conference.
Can't disagree with you at all. I mean, I completely agree. All what I can say is apologies for not providing any response for your requests. And hopefully, moving forward, we can make sure that we do respond. And, you know, Henne's comments of just, even if it was just once a week saying, "Is everything okay? Yes, everything's fine. Okay, great job, thanks very much. Keep, you know, keep chugging away." Again, that's a valid point. We will try and be more supportive, and at least have an ear to the ground. And so we know, we have some advance warning if there are any issues, and be there to help guide when needed. And all what I can say is, you know, apologies if you felt let down in that respect. Not our intention. You're quite correct, the conference is crucial for the community. And we want to see it succeed. So we will take your comments on board and try and build upon them.
Lars?
Okay, I have no real question. I just want to take the opportunity to thank you as my representatives. You're doing a great job, and I feel very well welcomed by you, and I hope you're doing that job at least until the next round. Thank you, guys. You're driving me crazy.
Thanks.
Well, there's still one question from Manu.
I have actually two questions.
It's on.
One is basically cutting down on mailing lists, infrastructure. It's again, infrastructure. Basically, we started with a lot of mailing lists, and at some point of time, everyone decided we'll start trimming them down. But it didn't happen. What, now, that's okay. But during this process, something bad happened, which didn't happen, like it happened inadvertently, but what happened was, we stopped using Open Suza marketing and started using news@openzuzi.org mailing list. Problem with this mailing list is it is completely private. So you ask, "Please give me the access", and then we'll give you the access. Okay, that's now how it should work. I have raised it in a couple of project meetings also, and nothing was done about it, like, so.
I wasn't aware of that. Henne?
The reason for that is a quite simple one, that we are drowning in the admin work. You know, there are not many people who take care of that anymore, sadly. Pascal left, which left a couple of services just unattended. It's basically, it's down to Marcos Dareks, who is there doing all the server maintenance, so keeping the base OS up. And if you look at the Open Suza GitHub repository, you can quickly figure out who is taking care of services. And that's not many people.
I agree on that. My point was, that's why I never spoke about Planet or any other thing, because since I'm involved in the project, I understand. But the thing is, one mailing list, which is sort of private, because every time you grant access to news@openzuzi.org, right? You cannot subscribe to news@openzuzi.org. You always get an accept from the admin, which is quite bad, I believe. This should not happen.
It's a private mailing list.
That shouldn't happen.
Yeah, sorry. When you say that there is still the Open Suza dash marketing... When you say that there is still the, the Open Suze dash marketing mailing list, that the news@openzuze.org list is purely for news articles, for publishing on the, on the news blog?
What will the marketing team do? So what's the marketing, what is the role of the marketing team? If we have an artwork team, or if we, if we have a mailing list for the artwork team, if we have a mailing list for news@openzuze.org, then I do not actually see anything happening. We have a list for ambassadors program. So this is all, so everything is a subset of it and we have a mailing list for everything else, so nothing happens on marketing list.
Dude.
I, I can get the part where you say the artwork and the marketing team maybe, although artwork obviously also has to do a lot of this Russian artwork besides the marketing artwork that do. What could make sense is to split those two and keep the marketing artwork discussions on the marketing list and the distro artwork on the artwork list. But the news mailing list is private and that's for a reason. It's because we discuss articles there that we cannot publish yet. So those things are meant to kept private. That list cannot be public, otherwise you have to start emailing each other instead of using the list and that's even less nice.
My, my point is let's just keep it public.
Yeah, but then you can't discuss certain things there because if you want to keep something secret, you can't discuss it on a public list. And I'd like to have a list to discuss certain things. Exactly.
No, but still, what was, we are in an open source project. Before news@openzuze.org, we were discussing it on.
No, we always have had the news list and it has been closed for a very, very long time.
Yeah, it's, it has been closed for a very long time.
And for good reason.
But before that, we did it on marketing, never, never, we, I think we're talking something like an, like I really do not understand here. I think this should go to public, in my opinion, but if it's what everyone wants, I'm okay.
As, as he said, you don't want news to be pri, to be public, trust me. No, honestly, honestly, register, register, stay there for two weeks and then step up in the next meeting and say, I want news to be public. I challenge you.
I, I think, I, I think Manu has a point, so I think Manu has a point, that some news articles could be prepared publicly, like the announcements for the new milestones, for instance. There's no reason for that to not be prepared publicly, for instance. There, there are some articles that definitely needs to be prepared privately, but a lot of them also can be done publicly, so.
Yeah, but.
There's possibly some middle ground there. Right.
It, it might make sense to make a deal basically together and say, let's keep news@openzuze.org purely for articles that are not meant to go public yet and let's do the rest, like the milestones, on the public marketing list. I think that makes sense. That's, that's a good idea, I think. But closing the list or, you know, merging them is throwing away the child with the bath water.
Can anyone really give me a very good reason? Because we are in a open, yeah, an example of.
Sorry. Let me, let me give an example. For the Open Suze release, for example, we, we discuss the press announcement before we send it out. We share with the press the Open Suze Gold Master a week before the release. We want to keep that secret because it's a week before the release. That should not be public. I mean, instead of using a list, I can just email people privately, but it's nicer if all the people involved are on the list and I can just mail the list. But that should not become public because then suddenly everybody tries to download it and our mirror blocks because it's not mirrored anywhere, just on that one server. And then the journalists come download it, plus that it's already out a week early. You don't want that.
I have the microphone, so I am the first one, thanks. I have no good answer for your question, but an example how we do it in the education project. You will notice that the education mailing list currently is more or less silent, completely. I guess it's the same with the marketing list. But this was a decision of, let's say, those who are driving Open Suze Education at the moment. We simply did not find the time to organize writing all that stuff in our email list. Instead, we decide to communicate over the org channel that we have. And I can fully understand that if the marketing guy says, okay, we communicate in this way and not in that way, and if you want to change that, why not jumping into the train, jumping into this team and drive the team into your direction?
The thing here is that everybody are welcome in the marketing list, right? So there's no limitation. If you want to join and see what's in the news, it's very easy to do that. It's not, it's just not for everyone. Anyone who wants to join, he can join. No one was ever, as far as I know, was ever forbidden to join news. On the contrary, we ask people to write articles for the news because for the past year, we were not, we were not that active. But for everyone, just to explain you why. I think we are discussing the wrong thing because exactly at this sub area of the project, we are suffering from totally different problems than closed mailing lists or mailing lists or not, or IC channels. If you look at news@openzuze.org, you will notice that the majority of, of articles was written by yours and that is a problem. Not because yours writes bad articles, because it's only yours who does it. And that's not going too well either. So I don't think we need to discuss if we open the mailing list or whatever. We can, we, you can join the news team and we can reboot it and then we can discuss about how we dis, how we communicate in the future. But up until then, I, I don't see the point of discussing this because for now, the mailing list is only for yours to tell, to talk to himself.
Well, just to give you a, a concrete example of why news@openzuze is a private mailing list. Samsung sponsored 11 ARM boards for the Open Suze ARM project, okay? With the drafting of the blog post for news@openzuze, we had to keep the content private, pending approval from the media team at Samsung. We can't just go, yeah, no, we're thinking about this and does that sound right and et cetera. It needs to be done in a controlled, responsible manner to ensure that all the facts that are going to be published are correct, that there is buy-in from the specific parties that are being talked about. And once that's done, then we can publish it and then it's news. If it's out in the public domain, it's not news.
You don't have a microphone, so we don't care about what you're saying. Manu, you had a second question? Yes? Sorry, yes.
What I think is if we move to marketing, maybe a public channel, we may have chances of getting more contributors. I don't know. I don't know. Maybe like if.
No microphone, no talking.
Actually, sorry for that. Actually, I will take advantage of this thing and say that although we are doing pretty well in marketing because of this guy, we really need, and this guy, and me. Okay? So the thing is that we actually, because us, because we are doing also other things, we need people that are interesting in writing articles because as Henne correctly said, yeah, only the last six months, it's only Joss, I think. So if you have, if you have ideas, even if you don't speak fluently English as I do, not as you can see, well, we have people to make proof reading your articles, so don't hesitate. If you, if you want to contribute that way to the project, please, we are more than welcome.
So let's try to move to another topic.
I have a big, a big thank you list that I need to.
Any other comment or question? Nothing? Then, ah, Lars is saving us from ghosts.
Doing the best that I can. What about the rumors more, getting more separation from Suze about having an own Bugzilla, an own Open Suze Bugzilla and other things? Did you hear it? Did you have an answer for this? A general answer for this?
So the Open Suze Bugzilla has been, while the idea's been around for at least two, three years, actually. At the last time a Suze Labs conference was separate, we had the discussion and at the time Greg was still with Suze and Jeff. And Greg had done a lot of work to set it up, but then the idea died because we could not wrest control away from, at the time we were still Novell and we could not wrest control away from the people that were doing the administration. Obviously times has changed, so if, you know, if this is a, a topic that, you know, the, the community feels strongly about, certainly should be discussed. There may be some negative side effects, you know, that we need to look at, whether in the end it makes sense. But, you know, again, it would be more discussion that is driven on the technical side and then, you know, if the technical community feels very strongly that we need to have it, we, then we got to figure out way, how to make it happen. And that's where the board would come in and potentially talk to Suze and say, how can we make that happen? But if, when and where in the end, that's a technical thing and, you know, the technical community has to drive the discussion, that's not really something we should be initiating from, from the board, I think.
Short, short introduction. It's not only Bugzilla, it also means getting rid more or less of the Suze slash Novell accounts there. So it's not only Bugzilla.
As illustrious leader of infrastructure for Open Suze, do you have the manpower to maintain a Bugzilla service? So it, it.
Do you really need to ask the question?
Yeah, th, th, these are things that we would need to take into account, obviously, and, you know, y, your input would be crucial, as would, you know, Daryx, et cetera, you know, the guys that have to do the work for the maintenance aspects, not just implementing Bugzilla, you know, anybody can deploy Bugzilla, but ensuring that it's stable. And it's also, you know, this could fall into one of the items that helped to bridge the gap. You know, it, having Sli move out of the Novell Bugzilla into their own Bugzilla, is that a, is that on the cards? I don't know. Is, would that help if we had a unified purely, you know, asterisk Suze Bugzilla? I don't know. You know, the discussions I don't think have, I've certainly not been part of any discussions for that. I haven't seen it raised lately. I know it's something that comes up, it's kind of like the foundation type thing of every so often, you know, the beast will wake up and go, I want a new Bugzilla. So, yeah.
But judge, but, I mean, from the topic, right? You can want a lot of things and I'm sure there are a lot of services that would be greatly beneficial for the project, but I'm telling you, we haven't updated our main landing page with 1 million views a month, right? Our main page, we haven't updated that for two years now. It's still running some old crafty nut in code that is not really in a good marketing page for us and we fail year after year to, to do something about it and that is just because not many people are doing things. So you can want a lot of things, but if you don't do them yourself, you will never get them. So be it the Bugzilla instance, be it whatever, it, it's not enough to have the great idea. You have to do, you have to deliver them yourself. This is an open source project and if you do, don't, if you don't do it, nobody else will do it. And like I said before, we are struggling with the current, with the current maintenance of all this stuff and I, can somebody cover his ears? I neglect my day job with, to, to do some Open Suze maintenance, right? And that is not something that should happen and we need to step up that game greatly. And I was hoping that this conference was actually lead to, to, to more discussions about the, the infrastructure because I, I, I really see that as a pain point.
Okay. I have two questions. The first one you partially already answered and is, okay, I'm asking to the board, you have a vision of what will be the product of Open Suze in the future? For example, 2020, what, what we become in the future? I say 2020, that seems so far, but is really, really near. And the second question is more important and especially specifically for Andrew, where did you buy your shirt and the green?
Okay, I'll answer the second question first because it's easier. It's 10 years old in Mauritius for about $3. I've got the blue one as well. I have a purple one which might come out tomorrow. Yeah, so it's, my wardrobe is quite eclectic, let's say that. As far as the, the vision for the conference in 2020, or, sorry, the product. We're a, we're an organic community. We grow, we flex. I hope that we can, you know, dominate the world. The reality? Probably not. But, and also that the IT industry moves at an astonishing pace. You know, it's only been a few years since, you know, the PC world was flipped upside down. And it feels like it's been that way for 10 plus years. It's only been about two or three. So I wouldn't like to guess on what the product would be.
So just on that topic, in the, the way we walk in the community, it's not the board who will decide, it's really the leaders in the community, but the responsibility of the board is to enable the community to think about that, to push the community to think about that and to come with a plan. Yeah. Sure, but I mean, it, still, it's not the rule of the board to come with a vision, but to encourage the committee to come with a vision. And actually, I think that's something that will, this has been discussed this morning with Ralph in his keynote and I think there's some willingness to really start pushing for at least three years.
for at least a three-year plan, four-year plans, to see where we're going and try to push in one direction.
Or another way of putting it, it'll be at least partially whatever you want it to be. Hopefully.
Any other questions? Okay, I just want to come back to something that Henne brought up with regards to infrastructure. I have the microphone. So Henne, you said that you were hoping for a discussion on infrastructure. Could you... Would you mind kickstarting it then?
Well, I mean, it's basically, if you think about all the infrastructure that we have, then we need to evolve that somehow. It can stay the same forever. I mean, you have to... People come to expect different things from... Or newer things from us. Like if you look at Connect, it doesn't really keeps up with how social networks work today. So there's a lot of stuff that you can do and it's web development in PHP. So everybody can do it. Or everybody who can code can do it. So we need to look at that. Look at our news page. I mean, it's a WordPress instance, which has really not evolved in five years. So there's also some web development you can do in PHP. Look at how the mailing lists look like. They are even... They aren't even... The archives aren't even, you know, adapted to the Benjro theme, which was introduced like when Jesus was born. And... And so there's a lot of stuff you can pick up and you can immediately see it when you just go to our webpages and click on something. So then it's really your duty as community members to... If you notice that something is, you know, not running to your expectations, that you find out how it's done and that you do something about it. And that is something I have the feeling that since we lost Pascal, that we have lost one of the last guys that was fighting with me for doing things like that. And, yeah, I kind of hope that we can get up more people to speak with that.
Okay, no, I have the phone. First, please come to my talk tomorrow, 11:00. It's about Open Suza infrastructure. Then we have at 15:00, we have a BOF about infrastructure. And before, we have a party, hopefully.
Yeah, so... I think... Yeah, Henne, you're absolutely correct. It's community. Everybody can step up. Everybody who knows PHP. I think there is a... An intrinsic barrier of things that run with openzuza.org. People that are... You know, they don't know where to go. How do I run something on openzuza.org? And Lars is here to hopefully address that, right? I mean, we're getting the word out now for this conference. We're having an infrastructure talk and, you know, everything that Lars is doing to exactly, hopefully, address that problem, right? I think it is a barrier to entry. I don't think it is a... You know, I think once the barrier to entry is taken away, I think we will find people that will help. But I think right now, too many people, it looks like there's a wall. Everything that runs on openzuza.org, I can't touch. And hopefully, with, you know, the talk and the information that we're getting this conference, a lot of that barrier will go away.
It's kind of twofold. One, you know, there's this facefully perceived barrier to doing anything at openzuza.org. Two, I think there's... Those that want to help out feel that they won't be able to help out because those that currently do the maintenance, whether it be yourself or Darex or Lars, et cetera, don't trust the person, which is understandable. You need to know who the person is and verify that they're actually capable of doing it, et cetera.
100% of our infrastructure is open source. It's all on GitHub. You don't need anything to change anything. Oh, okay, you need a GitHub account. But if you don't have that, I don't know. I don't want to see your changes. So... So there is nothing you can do. What the other part is like maintaining the base OS. That is, and that is what Lars is about, is talking about, maintaining the base distribution or the machine it runs on. That is something where we have a barrier for entry and everything. But for the other stuff, we don't. It's all on GitHub. You change it, it gets automatically... Most of the times automatically deployed and that's it.
Yes, but I bet you that most people don't know that it's all on GitHub. Right? I mean, right, there you go. You know, and I had to run around to... And then you helped me, thank you very much, to work on the Open Suza Summit website, right? Most people don't know. It is simply... It's really that easy. Most people don't know where to go and where to look. And, you know, it's not... As far as I know, we don't have it written down anywhere in the Wiki. And even if we have it written down, the information is not necessarily distributed, right? But, you know, we just have to be more vocal about it. And we are now, right? Everything's on GitHub. Not everybody knew. Well, see? And so now more people know. And if we keep talking about it, then, you know, we'll get the word out.
Just a quick question. Show of hands, how many people know PHP? Okay. Anybody know Ruby? Okay. So there's no reason why within two months you guys can't help fix everything that's on GitHub then? You've got plenty of people, plenty of hands, plenty of eyes. Pull request and off we go. Now I live in my own world, don't worry. I don't want to live in his.
So we have one question on IRC. So this is from Andy Tosan. Would the board be able or willing to add more marketing-based strategies for the distribution release? Meaning changing distribution code names or giving marketing clues to other teams to base their work on? You wanted to reply to that or...
I was just gonna say no. It's not our job.
Yeah, I must admit, it's something that can be done in the marketing team. But Josie is not listening, so... But it's... Yeah. From my perspective, and I think at least Robert was saying the same, this is something that can be done as part of the marketing team. And if somebody wants to do that, just bullshit to make it happen.
Come on, guys. Asparangus is a great name. Come on. Who... Why do you have a problem with Asparangus? Yes, so... You have something to laugh at when you're drunk. It's 12.1 Asparangus.
Okay. Anything else?
I have something, but it's not a question.
You have like seven things to say.
Yes.
I know about that.
Shortly.
Okay, nothing else? Nobody to save us from Kostas?
I am the holder of beers today.
Okay.
Okay.
Come on stage.
Okay.
If you have seven things to say.
Oh, nice view. So, no, I have to stand up. First of all, I want to thanks... To thanks... Okay. Not my English teacher, obviously. So I want to say some thanks that I have. First of all, I have to thank Stella and Henne, but mostly Stella, please. None of this would be reality if she wasn't... If... If she wasn't here, if she wasn't around, right? It would probably be something lousy if it would be. I don't have a taste in all this, so... Human stats, you know. So of course Henne. And Ralph, who still holds Henne at work after not doing nothing for the past three months. Okay. I want to thank all the volunteers that came and helped. And I want to thank the guys from the Zen2 community that helped us every time to get the events. I have a lot of people to thank. I want to thank the board who ignored me for many times. Those guys told you that, sorry. I want to thank my mother. Okay. You have to thank my mother, so... No. Yeah, you do. Yeah. You have to thank my girlfriend. Everybody, but not where's she? Yeah. Where's she? Oh, yeah, there, there. You don't thank her. I prohibit you to speak to her again. So we were about to take a group photo, but not today. We'll do it tomorrow at lunch break. You will be here, right? So now, today we have a party. We have a sponsor party. It will take place in the next store. It's too close. If you go back to your hotels and you won't get back, you'll find information here. There is the address of the place, so you won't get lost. You'll see Gicos around the entrance try to find you and guide you to the right way. Also, we'll probably have Gicos to get you to taxis after you get drunk out of there. So there will be barbecue, so don't eat a lot now so that you can eat after. Also, tomorrow, we have a volunteers' cocktail party, which will be... You have to take advice of your card to get that... To find that place. And... I just like the stage, you know? It's nice here.
Thank you, Kostas. So I guess that's it. So thanks, everybody, for coming to the tunnel. I hope it was useful, that you learned something or that you were able to give us all the feedback you had. At least, I think it was useful for us, for the board. So this is good from that perspective. In general, if you have any feedback, don't hesitate. Send an email to the board list or to Open Suza Project. It can be public, it's definitely fine.
Or speak to us in person. We're here. Some of us are here till Tuesday morning. So just grab us, say thank you, give us a kiss, give us a hug. Try not kick us too hard. But seriously, if you have any complaints, any issues, we're here to speak to you in person. So please just grab us.
Enjoy the party tonight and enjoy the rest... And enjoy the rest of the conference. And have a good time tonight, and we'll see you there.
And it's K.I.L.T. Quilt's what I use in bed.